Questions for them and send out for the fill in a rubric that we've set up and make our recommendations to who should be appointed to the position. I believe that our first candidate, I hear footsteps in the hall.
I've been for awhile.
I squirt them in him.
Hi. Kate Moore.
Hello. Good afternoon. We got you on stage still.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I assume that you are Karina Reyes?
Karina Reyes, yes.
Hello, Karina. Welcome. My name is Kate Moore. I'm the chairperson for the Board of Trustees. We thank you so much for your interest in kind of exploring this position. So why don't you give us a little bit about yourself if you don't mind?
Okay, yes. My name is Karina Reyes. I'm forty-two years old. I recently moved to Dudley ten months ago. I was living in Rhode Island for the past twenty-two years. I was born and raised in Guatemala, but as I said, I've been quite some time in the United States, so this is my home most than anything. I have two kids, twenty-three-year-old and fourteen-year-old. My twenty-two is going to college and my fourteen is going to high school this year at Shepherd High School. And I'm a quality engineer for Aspen Original at Marlboro at the moment. I've been in the field for the past ten years. And yeah, that's about it, about me.
What is your position again that you said? What do you do?
An IPQP Quality Engineer, Advanced Process Quality Planning. We are an automobile company and my job is to create processes and to review customers, suppliers, try to make sure everything's compliant and the way we do business and trying to manage our products for future, hopefully not failures, but being prepared.
Where's that company located again, did you say?
I'm sorry?
The company located?
Marlboro.
Marlboro, okay. Thank you.
As you can see, we have our own names. We add up five trustees that are new seats. Kate Moore has been on for twenty years or better.
Head court, eighteen. This is my eighteenth year.
Okay.
As trustee. I'm Kate Moore. I'm the newbie. I've been here two years.
I'm Joyce Narodzinski and I think I'm going on over six years.
Richard Clark, and I think we're pretty much similar. I had one year off, so I took a little vacation if you will. But back again.
And I'm Nicole Messi. I'm the library director.
Nice to meet you all.
It's nice to meet you and love Karina. So we do have some questions that we just wanted to kind of throw literally at you just to kind of see what your feelings are in regards to the Pearl and what goes on there. So I will gladly ask the first question. What is it that you like most about Pearl?
About Pearl?
Yep, that's the name of the library.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Who do you think know? Well, coming in, I like that I see that there's a lot of history here. I saw the pictures of people that probably had worked here and it's a nice building and I'm pretty sure the library does a lot for the community for what I could see. There's a lot of committees that are united that they meet here and I see that it's a very organized place.
Have you visited the library?
No, I've never visited before. This is my first time.
Have you gone online?
Online on the library?
To research?
No, just to read about it, but not to research the library and the library website itself.
Well, you can keep, you can just ask.
Well, thank you, yes.
We want to compare apples and apples. Let's keep it simple.
What do you believe is the most important thing that you personally could contribute as a trustee?
I think I could contribute ideas and problem solving and probably trying to help the team on the decisions that are to be made. I'm pretty, I have a huge intuition, so I think that will also help the committee. And that's also, I also use it as part of my job. We do a lot of problem solving and that's one of my strengths.
That's great. Our next question is, are you able to commit to meetings on the second Tuesday of each month?
Yes, I am. I have no problem. My work is very flexible and I can work from home as many times as I want or need.
And even though this appointment ends on June sixteenth of two thousand twenty-five, so next year, would you plan to run for election for a one-year seat? So basically what would happen is the position that you're coming into now, you'd be finishing out our prior trustee's spot. So that spot would be open for, for election, if you will, this coming June. So would you be willing to, you know, make the commitment and, and move for like a reelection or a reappointment to the position in June?
Yes.
Actually, unless no one ran, it would be an election.
Okay.
And that would be gathering fifty signatures to get your name on the ballot prior to.
Yeah.
Yeah, normally it's a three-year position. We're all dealing with three-year commitments, but because of the resignation of a person, this is what we're feeling right now.
It's rotating, so typically there's two trustees that are elected each year for three years unless someone leaves the board and it's, you know, there's a lot.
It's a little complicated, which is what we're doing tonight.
And do you have any knowledge of state and town funding with regard to libraries?
Not at this moment, but I'm pretty good at doing lots of research, reading, and I can move my way into getting things I want. So even though I don't have the knowledge, I'm confident that I will acquire it.
That's great.
You were obviously in town for part of last year's funding episode that we had in the library. Did you follow that at all? Did you go to any of the town meetings concerning all the financial difficulties town had and especially the livers at last year about this time a year ago?
Yeah, no, I did not. This is my first attempt on trying to do some community debt service in Dudley.
When you were in Rhode Island, totally, we're gonna sidebar on this one. When you were in Rhode Island, were you involved in any town, you know, town committees or town involvement at all?
No, I was not. I was, most of the time I was focusing on my kids until now that my daughter, my youngest is fourteen, I'm starting to try exploring doing other things.
It's a full-time job.
Yeah, I've always had my hands full. I'm used to it. That doesn't scare me. I was a full-time student, a full-time job. I had a full-time job and I was a full-time mom, so I'm used to, and I actually like it. I like to be busy. It's part of me. That's why I'm starting to feel a little not that busy. That's why I'm trying to explore where to use my time.
Can I go off the script just a bit, Madam Chair? What is your educational background?
I went to high school in Guatemala. I had college in Guatemala. I went to law school in Guatemala, a little bit of medical school. That didn't work out. I moved to law school. Then when I moved to the U.S., I wanted to go straight to college because that's the mentality and what I was used to, but I couldn't because I didn't speak the language. So I had to wait until I had a certain level of English to go back to college. And I ended up being received in ITT Tech. It doesn't exist anymore, but back in the day it was a technical school that would give classes to older people that wanted to go to college at an older age. And that's when I went. I graduated with an IT bachelor's degree, but ever since I graduated, I've been working as an engineer on quality and that's what I do.
So I have a question. So there's been like a lot of hot topics with libraries in the state of Massachusetts and I think across the U.S. My question would be, how do you feel about library material censorship? It's been a really hot topic.
Library material censorship?
Censorship.
I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, this knowledge, it should be available for everyone if they, if they wanna.
It's just been on the news and there's been a lot of things that's been a hot topic.
Yeah, I feel that sometimes a lot of people wants to do business with the knowledge they have. Maybe that's one of the reasons there might be some people opposing to certain knowledge that can be acquired for free at the library, which is not fair because if someone really wants to learn something and they have the ability to do it, why not? Why do we have to pay for every knowledge that we want to acquire?
Thank you.
Do you love Dudley?
I love Dudley. I like it a lot, yes.
And you said Dudley was ten years or ten months?
Month.
Months, that's what I was gonna say. Prior to Dudley, why Dudley?
Because it's closer to my workplace and I found a good opportunity on a house. I do house renovations, so I found.
The right house.
The right house, yes, that I'm renovating.
You're like the Renaissance lady, many talents.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you involved in any other community clubs, organizations, or anything throughout Dudley?
No.
No? Okay.
You should consider the Dudley Women's Club too, it's an opportunity. They're a great organization.
It's what recruiters, right?
Yeah, I'll be interested in.
Get some of the people in Dudley.
Yeah, what I was trying to do was to get involved in my daughter's school and programs.
Oh, they'll love you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think I have any more questions.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, ask the one around you.
Yes, yes.
If you don't know the library much, we should be able to answer some questions.
They're matching on us.
Yes. How do you like being part of this committee?
Oh, I love it. I've been part of this for a long time and it's a way to get back to the town in a very positive manner and get to stay out of the politics of the town pretty well. Don't have to get involved with the politics as much as other committees and just be helpful.
I was just gonna say, sometimes.
That was within the hush.
Sometimes.
Hopefully that one happens again.
But we did come through that, so there is to chalk that one up to success, if you will. Yeah, that rocky road that I think Mr. Craver is referring to is, is in the review mirror, hopefully, and things have stabilized somewhat. So I think we're, I would say generally we're in a pretty good position right now and the library has been moving forward and this young lady here in terms of her leadership has changed things tremendously. And I would invite you to, when you have a chance, to come up.
Yes, definitely do. Yes, thank you.
There are programs and things in the evenings and on Saturdays sometimes, yeah.
For all ages.
Even for all ages, that's what we can.
And she's expanding constantly. We're growing.
And if you go online, you can sign up for the newsletter as well.
Yeah.
Give you a monthly, or how often does that news, monthly? Monthly it comes out?
It's of opportunities, well.
Yes.
And there's a survey too.
Good, good.
She's a promoter. Marketing is her thing.
Good point, good point.
Anything else we can?
How long was the person that resigned, how long was that person part of the committee?
Did she?
She, she failed.
She was elected?
Didn't she fail and then she ran again?
Right.
So she was into her first full term, but again, it was parenting issues. She had just had a baby and she has a little one at home and it was just too much to try to juggle everything. As well you can imagine, but it's, we were appreciative to have a young person on the board because it's nice to get a different perspective.
Right.
But this age group has more time.
Okay.
I would say for a couple of years she was on.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should build one that you grab, yeah.
Any other questions or things that you?
I think I'm good.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for having me.
And the process from here is we meet with all the candidates and then we make a recommendation to the board of selectmen and it's a joint, it's a joint appointment for the year, but well, to finish till next June. And someone from this board will contact all the candidates, good or bad, you know, whether they've chosen or which either direction, just so you know what's going on. And that will happen in the next few days.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tell what you're gonna do so well.
So I've done so far.
I know you do so well.
All the stars.
Jeanne Tilly.
I wonder what I see.
Why do I know?
Oh, somebody's at the door.
Come in, come in. Coming to the hot seat.
Hello, how is everyone?
Well, thank you.
Now, you must be Jeanne Tilly.
That's right.
Hi, Jeanne. I'm Kate Moore and I'm the chairperson for the board and we thank you so much for your interest, I mean, chat with us this evening. What we've done is we do have like five specific questions that we're gonna ask, but I would love to hear a little bit about you first, please.
Okay, well, I've lived in Dudley for about twenty-six years and actually just over twenty-six years. Raised my family here. My husband and I still live here. Been a member of the library probably since the beginning with my kids. We spent a lot of time here. And when I moved here, I started, I stopped working out of the home and became a stay-at-home mom and to keep myself interested, I did a lot of volunteering, schools and organizations around town, the Dudley Traut and Education Foundation and the Dudley Women's Club. Yeah, so it's been volunteering in the schools and spending, you know, in the, also soccer, but yeah, a lot of different things.
That's wonderful. How many children do you have?
I have three boys.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nice. So we do have five specific questions that we're just kind of throwing out to all the potential trustees, just to kind of get a feel for, you know, where you're coming from. So please just indulge me here.
Sure.
What is it that you like most about the Pearl?
I like where it's come from and where it has gotten to. It, it's gone through a lot of transition with COVID was a, was a huge thing that worked against the library. Funding is of course always a, an issue, but I love the space it's in, the people who work there, the cheeky social, social things that are being posted. It's just fun. It seems like it's a fun place to be and the people there seem fun and, and I'd like to be a part of that.
Wonderful. What do you believe is the most important thing that you could contribute as a trustee?
Well, I have a lot of volunteer experience on boards and in the community. I like to be active. I like to do research about things that can bring maybe the library forward, move it in a, in the direction it's heading, because it seems to be heading in a pretty good direction. I like to read. I like kids. I like adults.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Are you able to commit to meetings on the second Tuesday of each month?
I can. There, I, I right now can recognize one conflict, but I also recognize how important it is to, to be at the meetings. They meet once a month and that's our, our touch time to come up with ideas and, and make scheduling for any activities during the month. So I recognize the importance of that, but I wanted to be upfront that I, I am aware that I would be unable to make the October meeting.
So one meeting, just?
Right, that's, that's, yes, yes.
Okay, great. And then even though this appointment ends on June sixteenth in two thousand twenty-five because you'll be filling out the obligation for the prior trustee, would you plan to run for election for the one-year seat?
As I see it now, I would.
Okay.
Depending on how we all work together.
Unless you skip off.
Yeah, I don't know. I know some of your people, so.
And you're still here.
Yes, and I am. I sat down, actually. Yeah, yeah, I would like to be, continue to be a part of it.
Wonderful. And then do you have any knowledge of state and town funding in regards to the libraries?
Just what I've read in the paper, not that much. I can't really say that I'm that up to date on it, but I could be. I definitely would take the position very seriously and, and it's such an amazing place for the community and, and people need access to it. So many people don't have things that we can offer them at the library. And so it's really important to make that available and bring in more people who don't recognize that, figure out ways to make that really, really work well.
Fellow board members, some questions?
Well, I guess for consistency's sake, I asked the question of the last candidate. What is your educational background? It wasn't mentioned in your letter nor was it required.
Right, well, I am, I graduated with a BA in sociology and a minor in theater and English from St. Lawrence University in upstate New York. I did start a master's of teaching, however, I got pregnant, so I put that to the side because, because of that, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You done any theater?
Just in, no, actually outside of college, once. I was, I was a stage manager for many years and they asked, they recruited me to get into a play, The Boyfriend. I don't know if you're familiar with that musical.
Love The Boyfriend.
Yeah, I was Mrs. Brockhurst. Yeah.
My brother-in-law, one of his all-time favorites.
Really? It is, it's fun and it was fun to do. Mostly on backstage, so.
I was just gonna ask, can you help me fill in a blank here? What library services specifically have you used over the years?
Well, the children's area, you know, checking out books, doing research for certain things before computers became really big. I've been in there using the computer. What else?
How about programs? Do you participate in any of the programs that we do that kids are up for you?
I have, I have brought my grandson in to the storytime. My kids were too old for storytime. I think we did it a couple of times at the old location. Yeah, we definitely did with, gosh, I can't remember her name.
Waterhouse.
Yes, this is Waterhouse, yeah. My kids really liked her. So we've done storytime, some of the other, I've done some of the programs that come from outside, Julie's Yoga. I'm drawing a blank right now. I think I've been to a movie. I've been, I've been to some of the book sales, come in to look at the art, yeah.
Wonderful.
That's heavy user. That's a good user. Thank you.
All users are good users.
That's great.
Yep, so hot topic with libraries in the news and all that has been censorship. So how do you feel about library materials and censorship? I think it's up to the trustees to decide what's right for their community. I'm totally against it personally because I think all things need to be made available. Otherwise we censor minds and that's not our business. It really shouldn't be. So I believe that materials should be made available. I'm totally against banning books and just some of the, the things that go on, but. Yeah, it's been a lot. Yeah, it really has. It's a little scary, but I don't see that happening in Dudley. I think we have. Oh, I think we'd be surprised. Oh, really? Oh, gosh.
I don't think anyone is actually, we do have a policy. If someone has a concern about a certain piece of material, they can fill out a form and it's brought to Nicole and it would be reviewed by a committee in return.
Okay.
Whether or not, it would stay or go, but there's been no complaints at all to debate, so.
Good.
And that's part of our job to be on top of these topics and put something in at the policy level before it becomes, we have an issue that we're not ready for.
Right, right.
You know, and that's why when we bring these things up, it's very important that we get a handle.
Right, well, the library is a research area and all materials are research. I can, I'm sure there, there are some things that I would ban myself, but it's only things that are extreme, extreme in, in violence or. And I think you worded it right. It's something you would. Right. You would do that. But I would support what, what needs to happen in the community, so. Are you a member of the Friends? I am, yes.
Do you know you're the Mass Board of Library Commissioners?
No, I'm not.
Okay. As a trustee, you would be.
Okay, good.
They actually manage the, they are a state agency and they do manage the state aid.
Oh, they're the ones that we're, we're gonna have a problem with if our funding didn't come through? Okay, I remember reading about it, yeah.
Yeah, they'll do the building.
They're the governing board?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to meet certain criteria yearly. Nicole has to fill out several reports annually.
Right.
Yeah, and the budget has to be at a certain level in order to do grant the state aid.
Yes, I remember reading about that. That was kind of a scary time.
Yeah.
I remember other, my sister is a librarian down in Putnam and she said, well, tell them to come down here if you can, they don't have a library, so, yeah.
It is a position where you learn a whole lot more than you thought you were born to learn. And I recall coming into my first meeting and Joyce said, oh, it's very nice to have you. Hope you had some good ideas. And I said, I am completely willing to learn whatever I need to learn and, and do whatever I need to do. So last year really was one of those years between budget and between leadership at the library that we were faced with a lot of, a lot of hot seats. We had a lot of, you know, really focused, for lack of a better word, trustee meetings. So, you know, it's nice now to be able to come in and have things, Nicole's done a fantastic job, kind of, you know, pulling the reins and keeping the train moving. It's been fantastic, but it is possible that we will run into rough times, so.
Sure.
You know, I'm just being honest.
Okay.
You know, the possibilities are there and so I appreciate the fact that you have work with other groups and you are willing to, to say, yes, I'm willing to put the time in and I understand that it's a volunteer position. None of us are being paid and it's like, don't know, something, you know? So it's important that we're all, you know, kind of on the same page as far as that goes.
Sure, sure. And the challenges are important. They help us grow. They help us recognize and see new avenues and, and ways to improve and go forward and learn a lot from those.
And something we all learn too is about open meetings, executive sessions, what can be done, can't be done. what can be done, can't be done. And it's surprising to many people to know that within Mass General Laws, there is a whole section dedicated just to libraries.
You would actually be required to go through an ethics training program, if you will. But as I look at your involvement with the schools over the years and the number of years that you've lived in town, I'm sure all these budgetary things that we're talking about now, at least in a general sense, you have an awareness of. You couldn't be in Dudley this long and be this involved and not know that
Sure, and I'm very invested in the community. I, I love it here and I want, I want the community to thrive. The library's offered a lot.
I think one of the roles that we see is the advocacy in terms of the library. When we do find ourselves in those down periods, so to speak, we have to be the, the front.
Sure, the face.
You know, have weathered the storm, and they look pretty good, actually, for having come through all of that.
Yeah, they do. Relax, you know.
Very composed, very.
We have been so blessed. Our interim, our interim that filled in for a few months was fantastic. And then Nicole has just gone with it so fast.
I've heard that in the community, Nicole. You're very much appreciated. Yeah, we are, we are very fortunate.
It's a great library.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
And we, and we truly have staff that has continued to blossom.
Oh, they're wonderful.
Exponentially, under your tutelage, so. As I always say, thank you.
Thank you.
Have you any questions for us?
I don't think so. I, I think we talked through most of everything. I'm ready to learn if, if and when that happens. I guess, oh, do you have an idea about when you'll be making a decision, or?
We have to do, it's a joint decision. The, the trustees vote, and then they bring the selection to the board selection. So that would probably be September 9th.
Okay.
It's the first time we would be able to, and they typically accept what, what we put in. So they would vote also on the appointment. So once that's done, then that becomes official. The person selected has to be sworn in at the town clerk's office before they can actually vote.
Really?
Wow, you can attend the meeting, but you can't, you won't be able to vote.
Process is very, very short. It's a formality.
Wonderful.
And you're card-carrying trustees.
Oh, nice. Good. All right. Thank you.
And we'll see you at the library, hopefully.
You sure will.
Is she pronounced Sarah or Sarah?
That'll be my first question.
Good.
Sarah?
Sarah, yeah, I think it's Sarah.
Just say it.
I have a Sarah.
Oh, okay. We're ahead of schedule.
So as far as our numbers go, it's, we score one to five in each category, kind of? Okay.
See, the board health meeting was canceled. That's supposed to be held tonight.
Yeah, when I came in, I wondered if that's where we were gonna meet, because it was canceled.
They asked, but by the time I saw, and I didn't see Amanda's email, I had put it on email, and Nicole texted me about Amanda asking us if we wanted to. By the time I contacted everybody, I just.
This room's a lot better than it was in the past.
Dead flies.
The dead flies. Oh, yeah, we used to have them by the.
Like, about forty-five of them.
Oh, at least, yeah.
It's a whole window sill.
I don't think they use this room often, so I don't think the custodians have been in here as frequently.
No, it's a lot better than it has been in the past. Congratulations to whoever's been responsible for that. I don't know, Amanda, you might know who those good folks are.
Was this an elementary school?
Yeah, it was.
It was an elementary school.
So I went, what? K through nine at one point, then. Then Joe Christmas School was added, and I called Joe Christmas School at the end of school, around the school street.
Elementary, Dudley Elementary?
Is it Dudley Elementary? Dudley Elementary, that was built. And then Mission Road was built. And then this got smaller and smaller. When I went here, it was K through four. Then it became just K one, two, I think.
When I was at Bartlett, it was usually, in the sophomore year that.
We did, I was, I was the last class from Dudley to go to Bartlett as 10, 11, 12.
Do you know if, oh, I was just gonna say. Amanda, instead of wasting people's time, can it be paused till the next candidate comes in? I don't, I'm just asking, can it be paused? Only because. Yeah.
We're, no, we're recording right now.
Okay. I just didn't want it such a, a time waste. Anybody that's watching and thinking, like, well, what are they doing?
See if she's available. I mean, we did, it says expecting, but I don't think anybody's gonna.
Should we be telling them that ahead of time?
Yeah, we have.
Thought of that part way through.
Little history, I just give a little history of it. Dead flies.
When he brought that up.
That's true, but I, I'm glad you said what you just said, because I didn't have any.
That would be okay. I just feel there'll be too much space, that they're gonna be like, what are they doing? Ridiculous. Yeah. We have not.
Because we can't, right?
Well, we can't, but.
We're not doing that.
No, my issue is, is we didn't tell them that it was being recorded. That was, that was not really, we, so I don't even know if we should, if it should be put out to public, because we did not give them the option. I, I don't think that's fair. I really don't. We should have notified each one before they sat down, just so you're aware the meeting is being recorded. I don't think we should.
Yeah, I would go to the profit, yeah, so I'm faded.
So should we?
Just do, should we just do it now? No, I would just do it now. You mean discuss it in the meeting that?
No, 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 only it's, should it be discussed on this recording that?
Due to not notifying candidates?
Yep, and error on my part to notify them that they were being recorded. Just, I mean, who's gonna want, who's gonna watch this?
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Yeah.
What was Amanda's first question? Do we want this recorded or live, right?
We're not live.
Do we have to have it recorded?
Yes, yeah.
There's no one out there.
We do have to have it recorded. Far as I know, it's being discussed.
I almost said what someone was saying.
Yep, that's my, I agreed to dump the whole thing. Yep. I would dump the whole thing.
We didn't inform either candidate that it was being, that it was being recorded. No, said, no, no. Joyce just brought that up.
I mean, I just feel that that's not fair to them to. We had conversations, and they're like, to know that this is gonna be out on the airwaves. Like, I don't, I would have wanted to be notified.
So the only way I would know is if I had a copy of the agenda. Does it stipulate this meeting will be recorded? That is public record.
Did we say it in the beginning? Oh, you did say it in the beginning? Nobody was.
I understand, but it is public record. It is on the website, as such, the agenda is. So anyone attending the meeting, even as an applicant for a position, I would think it'd be.
I missed that I did not bring it to their attention.
So what are we talking about, a redo?
No. My feeling is. Can you, how about finishing the meeting and saying there is a recording? Like Pat said, it was recorded, but, like.
Can we notify them after the fact and see if they had any objections to that? And then if they did, then I guess we're obligated to do it over again.
I wouldn't do it over again.
I, I personally can't, but.
I think each candidate should have been notified when they sat down.
I agree.
And we didn't.
I mean, just like we have to announce it in the beginning of the meeting.
They're not, they're not looking for our agenda. Like, this isn't a regularly scheduled meeting.
I, okay, I'll grant you that people don't necessarily look at the agenda, but this is a circumstance or a situation in which they're definitely involved that might, you know, might be a bit of curiosity in terms of what does that thing actually look like. Not sure where they're coming from in terms of their interests, whether, you know, consider looking at the agenda or not. But we can make mention of it to the next candidate.
And then do we ask permission of the first two?
Yeah.
Explain the situation, but, I mean, I just, it's totally upfront, because we wanna work with these people, whoever it is. We don't want to be sitting there blindside to them before they even get on board, you know.
I don't have a problem just shooting them an air email tonight.
Yeah, and if they have absolutely any problem with it, they just won't care. I mean, that's, that's totally fair with that.
It's at our discretion.
And we will, if it's our discretion, with the board, so who will be there? If they don't like it, it's a no.
We need one of those signs on the door, "Recording in progress."
Well, I just think that that's not typical. That you're going to, for an interview, and you're being recorded. Never.
It's probably more true now than ever before.
Several of us.
What, being recorded? I haven't seen, nobody in my employment has ever been recorded for an interview. It might be on Zoom, like, because there's multiple people, but never.
Is that public or private, often, you're talking about?
Private.
Private, okay, private, I think is a different role. Now, we've got all the open meeting laws that apply specifically to the state of Massachusetts General Law, and there's a big number.
That would have triggered me when we were having the open discussion. You know, open meeting discussion, that that would have been, hmm.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think anybody's gonna object or have an issue. I'd be very surprised if they did.
I promise I'll say something.
You've done an admirable job. Thank you.
I just thought of it, like, partway through, and then I went, oh, we didn't do the first one or the second one?
It's, it's a good thought, but.
Thank you for thinking. I think I was a little tired today.
This lady has two young children. That may mean her schedule's a little less flexible than some of the others.
Oh, do you know this one? Oh, you do, okay.
Yeah, twins and another.
Oh, what age is?
Like, comes.
Oh, that's top secret stuff. That's for her to divulge if she shows to do so, okay.
Can you check your emails, Pat? I wonder if she sent a late thing, she can't make it. Oh, would she send it to you?
Oh, I don't think so. I'll just make sure, but just to make sure she didn't send it to her own.
Yeah.
She said for sure she can make it.
Here comes a sweeper. Sweeper.
I told her if the door was locked, I'd call.
I did see you in there, but.
Seven cars in the back line. There were seven of us here, so maybe.
We do have a phone number here, at least I know the letter that I'm looking at.
I, yeah, I would.
Last Wednesday, huh?
Is that good or bad?
We're not sure.
Been along Monday and Tuesday.
Been along, but it's been a couple weeks, yeah. Was the board health meeting rescheduled?
What was the reason for canceling, do you know?
Yep.
And she sounds like a big philosopher. I'm like, is it?
Not a forum?
Conveniently.
Ah, okay, gotcha. Gotcha.
Does there still no additional bodies?
What is the official number of that board?
Three.
Three. I think they are going up at the town. They're gonna request five. I think that's a really smart thing, too. It should have always been five, I think.
Only three. Which is tough.
Because when I read one of the things, they, they said that the one girl that you rarely see there has only missed two meetings. And I'm like, I think it's been a lot more, but no, but then they phrased it, and I read it again, and it says she's only missed two scheduled meetings.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, they have more than scheduled meetings, and that's why we haven't seen her.
Okay. That's tough. If you show one person, you've got two, and how do you break a tie there if it comes on?
You're gonna go to the, the September 9th meeting, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
There've been a lot of people in your neighborhood that have, I've seen that have gone lately. Oh, really?
Yeah.
And what's the petition for?
It's to get information directly from the Department of Environmental Resources.
Oh, okay.
That's, DEP's supposed to be there at that September 9th meeting, so.
Yep, we all have wells, so.
They did do some testing.
Does the town test your well for you, or no? You have to do that.
We have to do it.
And if you do it, and they're above a certain level, you're mandated to put in that poet. Oh, my.
I thought Ramco did some testing, didn't they? They did some testing. As I recall, they presented that they had, they had some information.
There were a lot of huge trucks that go up and down our road, I'll tell ya.
Where are they, where are they, so they dump dirt? Whereabouts on your road?
It's on Fish Road.
And where is Fish? Off of your road, off of west?
Yeah.
It's off of west.
Off of west, okay.
It's Fish Road and Inter Vale. They're across from each other. Coming from 31 and going down the hill.
Yep.
Fish Road is the first road on the right.
Okay.
And then the gravel pit is, um, to a pretty awkward area.
All right, next to the rail trail.
Yep, exactly.
So, the, have you, well, you're not walking right now, but have you gone down to see the, how they've improved the rail trail? Like, I'm curious. And what'd he say? Does it look good or?
He doesn't know why they bother because, you know, like, in the summer, it's gonna be hot. On asphalt as opposed to, and it wasn't bad, I mean, they graded it.
But isn't there, aren't there a lot of trees? There's a lot of trees on that trail.
Both sides, yeah.
So, I mean, it won't be.
There were a few muddy spots after it rained in the past, but it was not such that you couldn't get around.
Right now, it's, uh, he's not going.
Right, it was, it was money from the state, yeah.
No, they literally, it was money from the state, but the state is literally the ones that told us.
Oh.
The state is literally.
I think it was, you know.
It was a grant or something or?
Oh, I think that was part, yes, it was a grant.
It was a grant.
And I think it was a, yes.
We got two options.
Welcome, how are you?
It's good, how are you?
I'm good, thanks. Okay, because I've already been called up, acknowledge that we are recording.
I can see the light, but thank you for saying it.
You are quite welcome. And what is the best way to pronounce your first name?
Just, it's funny, I get that a lot, only in New England. It's just Sarah, just like regular, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Perfect.
I can't tell the difference, so people say it a different way.
Perfect, thank you so much. So, my name's Kate Horn, I am the chairperson for the library trustees. And these are my fellow trustees here, along with Nicole, who is our library director. So, we thank you for giving us time this evening.
Thank you.
We're appreciative of your interest. What we are doing is just asking five basic questions and then we'll, you know, give you some extra little moments, if you will, and a couple of specialty questions that come out. But why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, please?
Okay, well, I used to, well, I went to college and then after college, I had worked at a library. I didn't really see too much of, like, the trustee, like, side of it. It was part of a very large organization, which actually, we were just talking about, but CW Mars is quite large. So, it's not, it wasn't that big. But, anyway, so I went to college, I was a library assistant for almost two years, you know, twenty-three, I'm like, I'm gonna move to DC. So, I left the job, even though I really shouldn't have, and life took me all over the East Coast and now we're here, raising a family, which, you know, wasn't foreseen when I was twenty-three. And going into libraries and seeing how, how resources are allocated and utilized or not utilized and, and then having these three girls that I'm trying to raise to be, like I had said in my letter, like worldly, you know, just being more open to experiences. I'm like, oh, and then I saw the position, I thought, why not? My husband's like, how much does it pay? I'm like, oh, honey, it's not that. Because I am, I am a stay-at-home, so, but I'm like, it's not. But, we all know, it's all, it's all work, but, yeah, anyway. So, yeah, that's a quick gist, a little bit more than what was in the, in my letter, I think, so.
Wonderful, I appreciate everything. What is it that you like most about our library?
Oh, well, it's proximated to my home now, but no. I like that even though it's right down the street from, from Gladys, Kelly, it's like very different vibe and I can get different things from each library and still utilize them both, and Charlton. Although it's funny, because it's only fifteen minutes away, it feels like forever, because it's all back roads. But, and I love the drive to Charlton, but, yeah. I love the, the library, is it the library of things or the, I'm like, ooh, that's really clever and how the different libraries around here are utilizing that in different ways. I saw, like, there's a KitchenAid mixer at Webster, I'm like, what? That's so cool, but how are you picking that up? Because I have one, they're very heavy. And the children's programming, ugh, the summer's been really great, so.
Excuse me, I'm gonna interrupt for a minute. You've, you've obviously been to several of the libraries.
Oh, yeah.
What you say, the children's program was really great, was that regards to?
The summer reading.
Here and at the Pearl?
It was both here and, well, my two favorites lately are here and Webster. So, I was in Douglas, library is very small, I realized that the, that the Dudley library used to be really small when I, we checked out quite a few books and I noticed a stand with the old address. I was like, oh, I had to Google it, see, I was like, oh, that makes total sense, it looks like a municipal building. But, I forget the rest of the question you said.
Well, I was just inquiring as to whether, you know, you were ranking the summer program somewhat and I wondered, were we number one, number two, number three, and four contestants?
They were all wonderful in their different ways. I loved Dudley because there wasn't this, ugh, I hated the tracking, how many pages did the kids read or what times did they read and how many titles and stuff? Because, anyway, I really enjoyed that it wasn't focused on that, because I get enough of that in school when they start, they do the fundraising for the Read-A-Thon and stuff. And they're eight, my kids are eight, so, and we have plenty of friends that are in that same age group that actually can't read independently yet, and I felt that's a lot of pressure and a little too much, but. So, we did not participate in any other summer reading program other than Dudley.
Okay.
For that reason specifically.
It sounds like you did your homework, so refreshing, you can take that back, Nicole, to your staff, because that's a, I would never have thought of that as being such a positive.
Oh, yeah, for sure, for sure.
That's wonderful. What is it that you believe is the most important thing that you personally could contribute as a trustee?
I think probably, well, probably everyone in here is like a patron, but patronizing the library more frequently at this point and kind of seeing programming and various, like, media and different books that are coming in, because that's great to see all the new, like, the new tags on the spine. But also, my experience working in the library, it wasn't for very long, but I have some really good friends that moved up. They started as library assistants and they became branch managers and some of them might've gone to Central. But anyway, not working with patrons then, but that's a different, that's a whole different ball of wax. And they all love it, so.
Great. Are you able to commit to meetings on the second Tuesday of each month?
Yeah, in evenings, those are perfect. And if not, that's fine, too, just find a babysitter. I do have three children. I know that's not necessarily something I'm required to say, but I am saying it. So, eight, eight and four twins.
I remember seeing you with the art exhibit.
Yes, oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yes, that was so great. It was ridiculously fun.
Excellent. Now, even though this appointment ends on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, would you plan to run for election for the one-year seat once, like, that term ends?
Sure, if I was selected, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Normally, it's a three-year position.
Oh, yeah.
You would be filling as an applicant for till June and then have to run for the last year of that position.
Oh, that makes sense.
And then the following year would be three, because we rotate two, two, two every year.
I assume somebody vacated the position?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Unexpired term.
And then the last question that I have, kind of my standard questions are, do you have any knowledge of state and town funding with regards to libraries?
No, they get some from said places, but I don't feel like it's necessarily that much. Probably, like, the school system, that you rely on donations and, like, friends of the library to raise funds, too, is my guess, because most programs that we go to, they always say, thank you to the friends, so.
Go trustees?
Are you involved with any other place in the community?
Not yet. We moved in February.
Oh, okay.
From Douglas, so not too terribly far. We weren't familiar with the library, but with the new director, I was noticing all the newer, like, program, children programs that were starting up and I'm like, oh, this is so great, like, we love Ms. Lainey, and we found out that Ms. Lainey had been coming to Dudley or has started, is that correct? No?
Four Whittles and Gable?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so anyway.
I didn't, I couldn't think of anything about when you said Ms. Lainey.
Sorry, everyone's like, in our circle's like, Ms. Lainey, and my, my children love Ms. Lainey, so. But anyway, so just seeing that come back on my radar, that the library kept popping up a lot more often. I'm like, we need to work our way that way, and then we were looking for homes and found one in Douglas, so.
Were you involved with different groups in Douglas before you, how long were you in Douglas?
I was in Douglas nine years, nine years. So, my children were born shortly after we moved there. We were in Worcester before. Yes. With two.
I noted that you're, you graduated from California State Polytechnic University. I think you might be the only candidate we've ever had who graduated from Cal Poly.
Now, I have to, I have to iterate, though, that, that just became a Cal Poly.
Oh.
It was Humboldt State, it used to be a teachers' college or maybe it was a nurses' in the very, very beginning. Humboldt State University, HCU, and part of the Cal State, and then I think in the last year, they qualified.
And what was your degree?
Mine was Women's Studies, Women's Expression in Art and Literature.
Oh, okay.
So, we did a lot of reading of, of nonfiction and women's, like, science fiction, yeah.
For you, Joyce?
Um, I will say that the hot topic about libraries on the news and TV lately and all that has been regarding censorship.
How do you feel about library material censorship?
I don't think it should be, but I don't know, like, how, as a board member, I would sway one way or the other, like, how much that is up to a library versus how much it's up to, I am unclear on that.
There's a policy in place, that we follow policy.
I'm assuming there's something, but I don't know what that.
Yep.
No.
Policy we created, yep.
I say hands off.
I'm glad we had no one complaining about the materials as yet.
Knockdown.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Are you familiar with the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners?
No.
No.
With kind of the, the over, overlords of the state aid funding.
Okay.
They actually manage, they're a state agency, but they, they do manage the program. They work toward getting the budget for libraries in Massachusetts each year.
Okay.
And that's where the, the state aid money is.
Comes, comes through, okay.
Exactly, yeah. And there are requirements of our library, we have to meet a certain funding level.
To qualify, okay, that makes sense.
Are you a friend of the Pearl?
I'm not. I'm not sure how to become a friend of the Pearl. When I was younger, I was always like, it's all the people that just volunteer to sell the used books. I know it's more than that. I know it's more than that.
To sell that.
I know it's more than that, but that's.
It's a membership form.
Just ask for a phone number, I can give you one.
Right.
Exactly.
Have you questions for us, Sarah?
Um, so, my, the one that, it's funny, because I, I had to look up, like, board, because the question was, have you been on any boards? I'm like, board of directors, board of trustees, what's the difference between the two? And then it was occurring to me that, because it's a nonprofit, is, is if I would want to pursue working in the library once all my children are actually school age, would that be a conflict of interest?
Yes, to be on the board, yes.
Yeah.
You have to not be employed for a period of time before you could consider.
And is that only within the town that I would be on the board for, so would it be open for other CW Mars branches?
Yeah, others would be open.
You just, if you've been on our board, you have to be off of the board for a period of time before you can apply for a position.
That's all part of policy.
It was a career path, though.
Yeah, for sure.
Can't be followed. Our town administrator indicated, one example of that.
Anything else good for us?
What's that?
Anything else good for us, curveballs, whatever you have.
No, I, I mean, if you wanted, if you could tell me a little bit about what you all do and you only, you said that there's one meeting a month, that's it? Wow.
Oh, I don't know, we seem to meet more than once a month sometimes.
Like this month?
This is, yes, well, right.
Also, this, this is a joint appointment with the Board of Selectmen. So, after we make a decision, we present the selection to, we vote and present the selection at a Board of Selectmen's meeting, which will be on September ninth.
That makes sense if you're required to be on the ballot later, so, yeah.
And then they, they would vote on it to make the appointment.
Okay.
Because this can be an appointment, if someone needs, it's filled by appointment.
Right.
But then after that, it's election, having to, you know, collect fifty signatures and, on the nomination paper and submit it on time and all the rest of it.
Nice.
What else we do? Personally, get into the library often. And one member of the board looks at the vouchers for the week and the bills that she's producing. That happened to be my job at the moment, I go and just review them and sign them off. Officially, that's the only manner, but I just get in there and be a presence.
Connect, yeah.
You know, check on what's going on, what's new, what's, ask questions.
And that's not a burden, I mean, it's a good place to be. And one of the things I've been harking is, you know, with the higher temperatures we've had this summer, it's the coolest place in town.
I went in just reading what the last day or two I was in there, when it was chilly outside and it was even colder inside.
It's that weird time of year, right? We went to go see If today and I was like, it's a little chilly in here. It's like a movie theater right now.
Yeah, fun.
Exactly.
How was it?
It's wonderful. I mean, my daughter, I took one of my twins with me and she didn't really, and I could hear the women behind me. Like, and that was me, just sobbing a little bit, it's good.
I'm sorry, where was this?
Oh, at the Pearl, the screening of If, which is Imaginary Friend.
Okay.
It's a new Krasinski. Six people, six people.
How many?
The number's going up.
In popcorn, little popcorn, I was like, ooh, what a treat. Yeah, that was fun. I, some of the movies, we walk in, I'm like, I know Jaws is screening today, so let's keep moving by the doors.
Anything else, folks?
No, no, any questions?
No.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your interest.
A little unexpected and fun, thank you.
We appreciate you coming in. So, basically, what will happen at this point is that we will, as Pat said, we will, you know, kind of tally up, we've done basic rubrics, we'll get those tallied up, we will find the person who's, you know, comes with our recommendation and then notify Board of Selectmen.
Their next meeting will be September ninth, so there's a little bit of a gap here in terms of the timing.
You'll know something sooner rather than later.
Okay, alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We'll get to reach out.
Alright.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's some bits and going on over there.
I just, anything in general.
Do what?
Just like the talk in general.
She's been sitting on her hands this whole time.
So, my question to you folks, just because I am not sure what proper, is that what this is gonna be like?
I'm sorry.
The question, and they have to be tallied, represented, given the meeting that we have.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I, they're actually on the. So, it says, total number of questions divided by the highest score. For example, with ten questions, the highest score being a five, the total would now be ten, so it's like a percentage.
I didn't get the, I didn't get the process, this one.
Yeah, I think it would just total.
I think it's just a great total.
Three totals.
Right, three numbers, three numbers. That's, that's simplicity.
I can, I can do simple. I have to rethink it if I go to.
Yeah, you can, you do much more than that, thank you.
It was nice to get the participation this time around. It would be nice to get the participation this time around.
Yes. Well, I think the process is better.
Exactly, yeah.
I think that, worst case, we've got two candidates for the Friends.
That's my feeling, too, yes. Yes, that would be good.
All right, just because it's that time of day, I'm gonna double-check myself.
We're looking for black smoke on this, is that what that is?
I thought it was white.
I don't know.
It's white when the folks decide.
Yeah.
Wrong, wrong flavor.
Price.
I get a point for that, I think.
All right. What would you like for information from me?
The winner is.
Is there a tie, or is it?
One, two. We have a problem. Because I didn't count all of them. I had an overlap. I apologize to you.
Whoa, time out. There were five of us, not four of us.
Absolutely.
And there are six of us.
We're striving to get to six. I apologize, friends and family.
No problem.
So, if we announce it tonight, it's out there.
So, Amanda, did this screen, were the kids were being recorded?
No.
Oh, okay. So, somebody who's tech savvy with.
It's not necessarily recorded if the mics are on.
Mics are on, okay, so, all right. I was just thinking, maybe somebody who's tech savvy would know that. I didn't know that.
If you come in here and I'm not recording, they're still gonna be green.
Okay. Learn something every day. It says push.
Okay, there is a clear winner.
Okay.
And, so we are not going to announce it on this evening exactly.
We have to vote on it.
We have to vote on it.
Yes, we have to.
Okay. So, I need to let you know, then, who received the highest number within our rubric system, okay? That being said, I will say it without having all that paperwork in front of me. All of the trustees have cast their votes within a rubric system, and I am happy to say that we do have a clear winner. It would be Ms. Jean Tilly. So, I would present that to you folks for a vote. Those who are willing, or those who are in favor of presenting Ms. Jean Tilly to the Board of Selectmen as our recommendation for trustee.
So, move.
Second?
Excellent. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.
It is unanimous.
It is unanimous.
Right.
Okay, perfect. So, we will make that recommendation to Board of Selectmen.
Typically, what happens is someone from the board presents it at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and we ask if the, if that person can attend also, so they get to meet face-to-face through your appointment.
Okay. And you said that meeting's September ninth?
September ninth is the next one.
Okay.
And we have a meeting on the tenth, so if that person can get.
Well, every two weeks, but there's Labor Day up there.
Oh, that's why I'm like.
We would probably want to get, if we can, on the top end of the agenda, because I suspect that that could be a very long.
I will put in right away to put us on the agenda.
That could be a long meeting.
Yes, because they will have had a meeting missed because of.
Well, and I think one of the agenda items is this DEP report, too, with regards to PFOs, and that could.
I'm expecting for that one anyway.
Yes, but if we could get this issue resolved early on in the meeting, that'd be appreciated, I think, by everyone.
If you don't mind taking care of that, will we pass it?
Sure.
Wonderful. That being said, we probably should contact Jean, see if she is that willing to accept.
Oh, yes.
And then, that way, we can let our really too interested folks kind of know what the results were.
I would ask them also whether they wish this to be open to the public.
Right.
To first to.
Yes. And I apologize for that mistake.
Oh, that's good.
Apparently Joyce did catch it before it was over.
Right. And, you know, this is new. This is, we've done something that we haven't done before, so it's understandable that we're not familiar with all of the whys and the why fours in this particular case, but.
So, can we ask Amanda, to the powers that be, what is the policy or procedure for after meetings are done, what happens? Can that be held? Okay. So, we would just ask her, then, I guess, to hold off until we hear back, but.
Post it to YouTube or?
Okay. Thank you. Yep.
Madam Chair, if it's in order, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you so much. The in favor? Aye, aye. Again, I thank all of you for your extra nights this month to take care of this business. Amanda, thank you for coming out. It is appreciated.
Yeah, thank you.
And Nicole, thank you for your time and.
And being quiet.